So, um, we will jump right into the agenda. Calling the meeting to order at 6:08 PM today, Wednesday, October 21st. Present, we have myself, Michelle Williams, Norm Peck, Rich Gordon, Rosemary Asfeld, and Kirk Scott. So, both for our quorum, and Gary Gashell as well. Do we have any additions to the agenda tonight? I believe everything that we have to discuss can fall under new business A. Comments and responses, but anything else? Okay, good. Public delegations. Mr. Dubitsky, hello, I see that you are here. Anything that you'd like to speak with us about this evening?
Not at this time, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll hop right into our new business here, which is to follow up on any comments and responses that we have received on the draft document. And we have a few to review from the Niang River Watershed Committee, and also the Open Space, is it called, Gary, or Natural Resources?
The Commission for the Conservation of Natural Resources.
Okay. Um, why don't we go through that first, since you're delivering it to us?
Yeah. I just, I have to go in and make some of these changes, they're more typos. But page 16. Art said he'd like to talk about conserving farmland. He'd like to add the East Line Land Trust as one of the other options there.
Okay, yep.
We didn't list them. On page 29, under Surface Waters, it was his, it might have been plus or minus a page, because the one I was reviewing had the margin, the Microsoft Word margin. So, it was page 29, under Surface Waters. About the second sentence down, he thinks it should read, "As East Line utilizes surface waters for..." We said we currently don't. And what I heard at a meeting the other night, and I do agree with, I think Rosemary will attest to this, correct me if I'm wrong, that surface water and groundwater are intrinsically connected. So I think if that's the case, then we need to edit that sentence. I think Art's correct.
Do you want me to, would it be helpful for me to pull up a screen share? Or does everybody have the document to file?
If you could screen share that, that could be good. Are you just kind of going off of, like, do we have a working document right now where that?
Yeah.
You have that, okay.
Yep.
Sure, why not, right? I guess, no, we can just kind of do them together, or what do you think?
Yeah, if you want to go through them as I go, then everyone can just follow along.
Okay, I'll show the screen. It looks like we have somebody else in the waiting room, too, if you want to grab that, Gary, while I do the screen share. Okay, can everyone see?
Absolutely, yeah.
Screen, okay. So, I'm on page 25.
Keep scrolling down to the, there's a title that says Surface Waters. Should be closer to 29, I think.
Okay. There we go. Did I pass it? This is the Historic Resources chapter.
Um.
There we go.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's, yeah, page 31, it was a little off. Um. This is although, yes, a second sentence there, "Although East Line does not currently utilize surface water for potable water supply, will we use Lake Canomac even though it's not in our town?"
All right. Yep.
Yeah.
Um, so should we want to?
Just say, "East Line utilizes surface waters for potable water supply, and they're valuable recreational resources."
Yeah, that's great.
Great. Okay.
Um, yeah, supply and these waters, just add the and after the comma.
Okay.
Page 41. He wants to, this is the open space table. I need to make those corrections on my end, and that was to increase the aquifer stratified drift. What he wanted to do was to take any parcel that fell within a watershed in which contained our aquifer protection area, or the stratified drift aquifer, and value it at a value of 10.
Right.
So that's a change I need to make in their document, which will affect this table, and that still needs to be done. So I don't know if you want to put a note there, that change is to be made.
Yeah, I'll insert a comment.
Then page 47. Under Niang River.
Yep.
He said it wasn't clear, and I think he was talking, yes, he was talking about the, if you scroll down to the figure, he said this wasn't clear, because you have the Latimer Brook Waterset, oil mill, and as I explained it to him, this was a depiction of the overall watershed, of all these subwatersheds that are contributing to the Niang River.
I agree.
So I don't know that there needs to be a change, but he did suggest that we could maybe change the title, the figure title, to something that's more descriptive of what this represents.
I think that this is the watershed, though. I mean.
In its totality, yes.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with it as is. I don't know if people have other feelings.
I think it makes sense. And so.
I didn't see much issue with it. The next comment was on page 6, if anyone else has anything. Third line.
Which page?
Oh, sorry, page 48.
48, okay.
Number 6, so it's a listed item.
There it is.
Third line, so Protect Agency, he said we need to add East Line Land Trust in there.
Oh, yeah, there it is.
Yep.
Just missing a word.
Man, people really did, they really did their due diligence, yes, quite good.
Yeah.
He hit page 55, I'm not sure where he looked at. He paid us a compliment, as in really indicating that we did a good job on this. And I think some of the material that we incorporated, he was very happy with. And then he went on to water quality on page 97.
I don't know if there's an easier way to jump between pages, so if anybody, I hope I'm not making you motion sick with the scrolling.
I don't know if you get, there's a little tab on the left-hand side, I think that might be a breakout, like Adobe.
Ooh, fancy.
Um, no.
Oh, oh.
Yes, you could jump through it that way, but it doesn't tell you what the page numbers are.
90 something. What did you say we're going to?
To be 97.
Okay.
97?
Yeah, this is it.
Underwater quality, third paragraph.
Okay, yep.
So, his concern was that Level A, what he feels is the Level A aquifer, really indicates partial protecting, partial protection. It is managed, it is a managed resource. And he felt that because the regulations themselves only provide partial protection, he thought we should be more clear, and that Level A aquifer is only partially protecting the aquifer.
Okay. So.
Better wordsmith this, or not?
Yeah, so, more accurately. Maybe something like, rather than these regulations rely on mapping, maybe after that sentence may affect water quality, then we could add a sentence like, "Level A aquifer mapping only partially protects..."
Well, I think he's talking about the regulations themselves for the zone. It's a registration process, and it omits specific uses, right? So, I don't know that he's, he didn't elaborate as to how that should read.
How about?
He'd like it if we could somehow make that clearer, but.
Um, while, while aquifer protection regulations offer some protection.
Maybe you said while they offer partial protection.
Okay, yeah.
I don't know if I like that, but.
Yeah, I don't know. Makes it sound like our regulations are weak, I don't know.
I would agree with that.
Which I don't know if we want to outwardly say, I mean, I'm not.
We're already saying it because we're recommending a groundwater protection plan, right here, anyway. Saying that in addition to these, we need a groundwater protection plan to be adopted, because there's other activities that may affect water quality.
Right.
Maybe we just.
Isn't there several layers of regulations already?
Yeah, we have the zoning regs, which have the aquifer protection, is the Aquifer Protection Commission. So we have those regulations, I guess he's just not happy with it.
Connecticut has their regulations.
That's just aside, now, I think aquifer protection and wetlands should have like a joint committee. But we can talk about that some other time.
On further note, I'm comfortable with the wording of this. I understand what he's saying, but I think that we are.
Yeah, I think it kind of covers it, especially since we're seeing the groundwater protection plan right after that, you know? I don't know.
I think we just leave it.
Yep.
I'm fine with it.
All right, so leaving it, moving on. Under page 99, under recommendations. Number 1. He said we should indicate that we can, oh, East Line's open space plan, he'd like to see as developed by the East Line Natural Resources Commission.
Fine.
Great.
And just two more, page 130. He said the chart regarding municipal finances, there was no reference to the open space plan or drinking water protection plan. I'm not sure what he meant by that exactly. Makes sense of the time. I think it's in the list of references, we didn't make references to those two documents, if I recall. That's correct.
Almost there. This is the chapter. Oh, here?
Um, he said there was the chart, yeah, municipal finance, so it was.
This is the chart.
What's before this? Yeah, okay, then it's going to be after 1, yeah, so you're going to scroll down to 130.
This is the last chart here.
All right, so just below this, maybe the next page. And the list of references, I think we have references at the end of this? Or is it all the way at the end? There's no one.
I think it's all the way at the end.
Yeah.
So maybe we just, we jumped to the end.
Okay, yeah, and we have some other comments about cleaning up the references, too. Yes, so what?
He was saying we need to reference the, their natural resources open space plan, and the drinking water protection plan, but we don't, and I didn't know, understand what he meant, but then he clarified that that was the Water Resources Report that they put together. So that's the other one he wanted referenced.
Oh, his protecting our waters one?
Yes, that one.
Okay.
Yes.
Let me, um, if it's okay with you guys, in the interest of time, I will just make a note here.
Sure, that's fine.
Because I do have the appropriate names of both of those, and can add them in.
Oh, after tonight's meeting, um, I don't know if you're already doing this, but maybe we should save it on someone's desktop or something. Like, I'm sure that this is all safe and fine in the Google Drive, but it might be good to just, like, do backup saves, like a text document every now and then. I don't know, just so we have like a thing after each meeting. I don't know if.
Good idea.
That's the case, I've lost things before.
Well, you know.
We have it backed up, but not of today.
Okay. Yeah, and who knows, you know, Google's now entrenched in a massive lawsuit, so.
Antitrust.
I don't know if I can trust them to save this for me.
Well, I wasn't implying that, but it's always good to save a thousand times.
All right, so was that the end of his list?
That was the end of Art's comments.
Okay, great. And do you want to quickly walk us through where we left off with Mark Zamarka and DEEP?
Yes, so I got clarification from attorneys of Marka. The comments from DEEP are merely the comments from DEEP. We don't have to address them for compliance with the P O C D. So, when I get ahold of DEEP, it was my intent to go through those comments with them, and show them where in our plan, they can go to find some of that information. But we have no statutory requirement to respond or incorporate any of their comments.
Okay, great.
Yeah, all right.
And do you, are you set up to talk with them before our planning meeting?
On the?
10th?
10th. Uh, no, but I hope to be.
Okay.
I wouldn't need to coordinate that, but being that the big press there for whether or not it was statutorily required.
So we're okay.
So that, not, no longer, you know, hot button issue.
Great. All right. So, the other piece of stakeholder feedback that we got was the chart I sent around from the Niang River Watershed Committee, and I was wondering if everyone could kind of pull that up on their own, since it is very thorough, which is great. I was hoping that we could gloss over the typos, and just kind of pick out the substantive stuff, and the things that are typos, we can just fix outside of the meeting administratively.
That sounds great.
So, I can just read through if everyone's comfortable with that.
Yeah, that sounds good.
So, the first one is in regards to the introduction and goals. And the comment is that the goals hint at sound land use, decision-making, environmental protection, and wise use of coastal areas, but do not specifically call out impacts of climate change and/or sea level rise. Considering East Line's committed significant resources to developing a coastal resiliency plan, this should be explicitly referenced here as a goal. That's in the introduction. So, I do think that we explicitly reference it elsewhere, but I think that he kind of has a, they have a good point about the introduction.
Sure, I think that's fine, yeah, why not? Especially if it's referenced elsewhere. What other people think?
Sounds good.
So we've got, let's just see what he's talking about. Well, we could, this is, this smart growth is specific to what comes out of the EPA.
Okay.
Okay, so it would be here in the goals. So, um, I think what we'd be looking to add would be a goal 18 about something to the impact, effect of acknowledging the impact of climate change and sea level rise on our coastal community, and.
Yeah, maybe like as a coastal community, um, this P O C D.
Well, it's like an active tense thing, it's like the recommendations, right? We're gonna.
Consider the impacts of climate change on, and sea level rise on our, oh, along our town's coast, something like that. Of town's coastline, I don't know.
How about prepare for?
Yeah, that's much better. Good.
Do we have group consensus on that?
Yep.
Good, good.
Okay, the next one is in Chapter 3, which is agriculture, I think. Trying Gary's method here, oh, good. Um, and it's in the recommendations, the ninth recommendation, which is, uh, sorry, guys.
Did we skip one?
I was skipping typos.
There's one, there's one just before it that wasn't.
Oh, adding a reference, so we have, um, yes, you're right, Kirk, that's a good call. So, in this first recommendation here, where we talk about conserving farmland, they suggest that we add reference to supporting or promoting the purchase of development rights through state and federal programs.
Don't we have that somewhere else?
Yeah, I thought we did, too.
Recognize it, I mean, I think it goes back to the last plan.
And we taught, I think these are the state and federal programs that we're talking about. We just don't use the words purchase development rights. We're saying preserve to cover all the different ways that you can preserve it, but those programs are administered through these partnerships.
It doesn't hurt to put it in again, but.
I guess we could say to preserve.
I mean, it's more of an example.
Exactly, yeah, it's.
So, I mean, the, this, the section heading, again, is, what, this was create, me goes on agriculture, I don't know. I mean, I thought we had discussed ways of preservation. I mean, I know we did with open space, so maybe we just cut and paste same under here, you know, the various ways you preserve open space, one is to violate those development rights. I know that's in the, the open space plan that was prepared, and we're referencing that as an appendix, in a reference.
Yeah, I mean, I think we've all agreed on it as a tactic, it's just a matter of if we want to put that text right in your prior. These organizations provide funding to conserve historic farmland through initiatives such as the historic program. And maybe we say here, and can assist with the purchase of development rights.
Could you, could you even say purchase of development rights or other methods? Maybe, I don't know.
Yeah.
Or something, maybe there's better wording, but like, we don't want to, we don't want to hang our hat on just purchasing development rights, do we? I mean, there's other things that we could do. And this would just, like, not.
Yeah. I like that suggestion, Kirk. Are you, are we comfortable with this?
I think so.
Okay.
Yeah, looks good.
Okay, so Recommendation 9 is the next one that he had comment on. And the comment was, "This proposed expansion of use should be considered very carefully. Smaller residential lots may not have the space to provide adequate storage and treatment for animal waste resulting in negative impacts to private drinking water wells and nearby surface waters." I understand what he's saying, but I don't think that applies to this recommendation.
No, I don't think so either. I mean, that's not at all, that's not really the intent of what we're trying to say. Right?
Right.
Also, there's right-to-farm laws, where you could literally do, like, you could farm anywhere in Connecticut.
Yeah, and I think obviously livestock would not be permitted for residential zones that can't handle it. All right.
I think we're protected, too, by the, you know, if you say permitted agricultural uses.
Yeah.
Because I mean, that, that concern is about negative impacts, well, they pull the, they pull the permit, then, right?
Right.
Yeah, no one's going to put like a hog farm in their neighborhood.
Yeah, that's fair.
I hope not.
Well, if nobody knows, then they're not, you know, I mean, if they're doing it very cleanly, then, great.
All right, this gets us into coastal resources recommendations. Suggesting adding another recommendation, which he further suggests should go between Recommendation 15 and 16, but here, here, there, there. And the suggested recommendation is, "Protect eelgrass and wooden grass beds in the Niang River and Bay by limiting nutrient inputs, particularly nitrogen, and carefully delimiting dredging activities. Both species provide important aquatic habitat for many marine organisms." This kind of leads into an additional comment that he has on Recommendation number 13, which is suggesting to include eelgrass beds to that recommendation about shellfish. So, again, I think these are things that we reference, but not as, not in this way.
Right, well, I just have one kind of blanket comment, like, when I was reading all of these, like, a lot of them were like, really specific and very scientific, and like, fall really heavily on the, under the purview of the watershed group, and the, you know, wetlands group, and, I mean, some of these things are like, really specific that are covered in other plans that we reference. So, how, how far into the wickets do we want to go on all these?
Could you scroll up at some of the other recommendations here?
Yes, certainly, but I was just also thinking.
And I think, you know, I'm just thinking, if you look at some of these, you could create a general thing, this is, you know, support. I think.
We talk about reduced nitrogen. Well, we're supporting this plan, as Kirk mentioned, as Recommendation 1.
You could say, you know, yeah, you could say support limiting nutrient inputs for the purposes of, but I don't know if that would make a difference.
This is such a mutant moot point. 15 and 16, the suggestion here. It takes you a couple of years to get a permit to do any dredging. The DE, the DEP has this covered. We don't even have to think about it.
Yeah, we've applied for grants, we're told no because of the eelgrass beds, so that's, okay.
I mean, I like, I like their approach with being very, very detailed, and, you know, giving very. giving very specific information, but I agree with your comments too about.
The way I can see how maybe we could kind of like compromise would be, yeah, sort of like broader statements, like try to reduce nutrient inputs such as like in parentheses, example nitrogen and try to promote, um, certain species parentheses, example, you know, eelgrass, you know, like I think that maybe there's a way to kind of.
I was thinking maybe in number 15, maybe if we make a little distinguishing point between wetlands and marshes or, or, you know, because, you know, I guess we include beaches. I guess people would, you know, salt marsh, do you? Maybe I'll call it salt marsh. And it kind of incorporates, I think that those marine piece.
Yeah, well, and it talks sensitive areas susceptible to pollution, um.
Well, that's kind of what I was thinking Don was getting at, is he's worried about the pollution.
Yeah.
And I thought that kind of, that point, that recommendation addressed it, but.
Yeah.
Who's section, I mean, who, you, you guys are like really familiar with this, with, with these sections and what they're talking about. So for me to, for me to say that it's too far in the wickets, maybe that's not a fair statement on my part, but, um, I don't know, I just, I think adding them as examples might be a good idea or, or whatever, but, uh, I don't know, um.
I think, I think his recommendation is fine. Doesn't, just adds words.
You know what? You're right. I mean, I, I'm comfortable with just adding it because.
Add it, sure.
Where, and I don't think it needs to go, and I'm just going to add it as number 20 because I don't think it matters to the order, but, um, we're getting at it anyway.
Yeah, why not?
But certainly not going to hurt, right?
Yeah. We may as well protect the wooden grass beds.
What even is wooden grass? Can you like eat it?
You know, I'm honestly not sure. I, when I saw wooden grass, I was like, hmm, I don't actually know what that one is.
We talked about dredging earlier. I'm going to eliminate that from this and just go straight to both species.
Sure. I'm gonna, I'm gonna just look up what wooden grass is.
Are you moving on or are we?
Yeah, ready to go if you are.
Yeah.
Okay, um, typo, um, the entire chapter of natural resources, that's what this piece of feedback is on. There should be greater mention of the publicly accessible lakes in town, Patagonia Powers and Gordon and Dodge Pond. The lakes provide many desirable functions, including sites for many types of human recreational activities, augmenting our drinking water. You guys can read this. Um, so, uh, greater mention of freshwater.
I'm sorry, Michelle, that, and which in grass is a secret word, sir?
He has it as one word, um, but I'm going to highlight to go back.
I did, I just, I just checked the internet since.
Yeah, it is two words.
It's two? Okay.
I said check on the internet, it looks like it's mostly two.
Okay, I did highlight it, so I will go back when I fix the other typos.
Okay.
If you're okay. Um, how do we feel about?
I, I think that's a, an opinion. I think those things are all true, but that's his opinion and I don't, I think the whole document kind of just, I mean, more publicity or, or more mention of public of these particular lakes. I mean, I don't, unless he's looking for us to actually like write, take this language and say, this is why we should include it, but.
Yeah, I don't think we need to add it.
Unless we, wait, do we have like a, we have, we have surface water. We don't have like lakes specifically.
I mean, there's a, I hate, there's a level of, I guess, expectation on my behalf that people can interpret what they're reading. And I don't know, I think there's a inherent understanding that these functions and the desirable functions are, you know, we can swim in a lake, we can drink from a lake. Well, no, I don't know. Maybe I'm giving too much credit to people, but I, I think it's kind of inherent in the whole document.
Yeah.
Yep, okay, um. There's a specific comment on.
The next one on dredging, you may be, you may have a good point here that maybe if we're recommending dredging, maybe we should not if it's not the, you know, the ideal situation or, or way to go about managing the pond.
Are we recommending it?
We recommend.
Have been or will need to be. Yeah, I think this might be from, uh, oh nine.
Hmm, I think he has a valid point. Yeah, focusing more on reducing nutrients and sediments.
We can just strike this.
Sure.
Strike that and add that they provide desirable function, including.
Oh, that's true.
I could kill two birds with one stone there.
And again, for purposes of time, I'm going to go ahead and insert a comment here and we will put the copy right from this, if everyone's comfortable with that.
Yeah.
All right. Uh, the next recommendation, uh, involves referencing the protecting drinking water document that we already, um, discussed through arts comments, so I, we can add that. Um, third paragraph on surface waters, okay. The text should include that Latimer Brook and Bridebrook both support.
Andromina's.
Andromina's, thank you. Fish runs, ale life in both and sea trout in the former. Bride Lake has one of the largest spawning populations of ale life in New England, um. Yes, I have read that on the sign at Rocky Neck many times.
I think, I mean, it doesn't hurt to add, I mean, those are just facts.
Okay, so it would be adding right here. I'm going to add that again.
Maybe we add it in the sentence prior, just before the last sentence.
Okay, yep.
I think it would make more sense then.
Yep, yep. But I'll go direct from the copy in his recommendation, if everyone is comfortable with that. It's well cited.
Yes, I think so.
Okay.
Love it.
That goes on.
Oh, yep.
This is when there's a possible, we can make a possible reference to chapter 13.
Okay, so chapter 13, we talk about future potential water sources and the Bridebrook Aquifer is one of them. And he's saying that if we reduce the Bridebrook's flow by tapping the aquifer, it could impact the ale life. I'm not sure I want to make that statement here.
Wouldn't they do like a full-on environmental study before they went to do something like that anyway?
Yes. Yeah, we, I mean, we already have, I mean, in drought conditions, right? We can't pump our wells anyway. That's why we connected to Lake Connaught.
Yeah. Um.
I mean, it's good information, but we're, I don't know.
I don't think necessary.
Yeah. Okay. Um, groundwater and surface water protection, he recommends adding PFAS to this list. Here. I think that PFAS is included in toxic substances used as solvents in industries, businesses and homes. And I'm comfortable, since we talk about it in detail in the water section, but can certainly add it if we feel it needs to be called out specifically and not just as a synthetic organic chemical.
You could, I don't know if they're the same thing, but you could even say like such as PFAS. I don't know, synthetic organic chemicals such as, is it, is it the same thing?
It is a synthetic man-made set of compounds.
So I think he's just calling it, saying we should call it out.
Yes.
Okay.
And you don't think.
I don't, I don't think it, I don't know if it matters, but happy to add it and also think it's covered.
Oh, such as in there.
Synthetic organic compounds such as PFAS.
Um, so it'd be here, I think.
Put in a parentheses there.
Do we need to spell them out because they're acronyms?
Yep, we do. And I will do that when I don't have the pressure of the screen share to do the perflural.
Well, you don't, you don't know how to spell that?
Pretty proud of myself for calling out PFA and PFOA separately.
Well, I'm impressed.
Okay, um, also, he suggests adding another bullet here for heavy metals, which can be introduced into surface and groundwater sources from many, yeah. So, um, that would address.
Maybe in the, in the sentence above it that says synthetic organic chemicals and heavy metals in the parentheses.
Yeah.
What's below this?
Nothing.
Nothing.
Um, this.
Our metal resource map, okay.
But we could, just for purposes of being inclusive, we could just do
comma.
This.
Heavy metals and hydrocarbons. Yeah.
Heavy metal.
This incorporates it.
Yeah, all right. Um, okay, there is a comment on steep slopes. Suggest striking the sentence that indicates steep slopes do not provide a particular function or value. And where is that? I think it's below this. Uh, no. Steep slopes, natural resources. We did define it. Where? Oh, I think that this is, I think this figure is in the wrong spot. I think this figure needs to go. Yeah. Up here for this here. So the figure should go before groundwater and surface water protection, I think. Because that makes sense. The figure's interrupting the chapter on, the, the paragraphs on it, because these are the other chemicals that are pollutants.
Right, okay.
And this, uh, figure illustrates this section above.
Right, okay.
This is the piece he's suggesting we strike. Which is.
I would agree because we don't, I mean, slopes do have value, aesthetic.
And, I mean, it's just, uh, yeah. It's just an opinion before a bunch of facts, I suppose. We're defining a steep slope, we still define it.
Well, do you want to somehow work in his comment suggesting that the steep slopes are useful for habitat and cause I think that's kind of what he's looking for. Well, another thing he might be looking for.
I, I don't know if we need to, if, what's above beaches and dunes?
Yeah.
What, cause I'm thinking.
Hold on, yep, I'm getting there.
It's really focusing on erosion. Uh, it's a title well.
Got it, okay, in context.
No, but tidal wetlands, they're, they're highly productive plant, so they, we do describe that. I mean, I guess we could describe it down there.
Right, the section is environmentally sensitive areas, right?
So, what did he say? He said they're.
They provide habitat.
Is that lame or okay?
Gets reasonable. It looks good.
Okay, um, the next one is a proposed additional recommendation for, um, things like, uh, tree filters. Um, install engineered biological treatment systems such as tree filters, which are already presently found in several town neighborhoods to treat stormwater by removing nutrients, bacteria and heavy metals. Other low-impact development techniques are also suggested for use in developments if feasible at the site. I think this is a great recommendation, but I think we cover it in our development chapters. Um, but we could repeat it here if necessary, um.
Well, isn't that a storm off, like a form of stormwater runoff management?
Yeah.
Probably squeeze it in under A there.
Yeah.
Squeeze it in as an example or something.
Yeah. Give it a bullet or.
Well, yeah. How do you want to handle that? Just.
I was saying maybe you could just, uh, make a bullet and pretty much just copy paste what he wrote, wrote there.
So a new B.
Um, just how, um, you know how C has a little, um, bullet point underneath it like that? Um, or sorry, B, my mistake.
Okay, yep. Sorry, guys.
No, you're fine.
Good. Thanks for doing this on the screen share. It's a lot easier to see it. It would be harder to.
Yeah, editing on the fly with six people talking to you is not an easy thing to do.
I, I still want to go into Word and like just cut and paste and try to paste it in there for you.
I keep trying to click on the screen.
It's not working.
I was clicking on the bullet thing there a second ago. I was trying to help you, but it didn't do anything. I was trying to help you, but it didn't do anything.
I appreciate that they looked so closely at this document. I mean, that's actually like, that's really nice that they did take the time to be so thorough in their feedback.
I agree.
Yeah. Yeah, we should probably send them a some, something back that said, you know, we appreciate the detailed feedback.
Yeah.
And, and, and try to resist the urge to, uh, say it's a little late.
There's three more pages of this.
You got it.
Right, on that note.
Okay.
Additional recommendation is to add the Nyonic River watershed watershed, eh, add the Nyonic River watershed protection plan here. We, we, we reference it very specifically in coastal resources. Um, saying that we support it and there's a request to affirm our support here.
I think it's fine to add it again if.
Okay.
It is somewhat redundant, but we've done that a couple of times in other places.
And I will capitalize the anti.
I was just clicking on that.
Thank you, Kirk. Okay. Um, he goes into some more specifics about why we should support it in this section, but I think that's backup notes for our uh, information and that this is adequate here as a recommendation, especially because the plan is an appendix, I believe.
Right, you talk about the Nyonic River watershed?
Yeah.
Last line?
Yeah.
They wait. Yeah, that's all it is, huh?
Is that okay, or do we need to pontificate on it?
Uh, I think that's it.
Okay. All right, in open space. Fifth paragraph. One, two, three, four, five, um. Suggest changing the text, so this would start here. Changing the text to note that the issue is with the proposed landmark development in the Oswegachi Hills that is not residential homes, but the construction of a dense apartment complex and associated parking lots on this environmentally sensitive hilltop site.
Why don't you just use residential units? That'll cover everything.
Should I put and parking?
Maybe and, and associated impervious surfaces?
Okay.
I might want to say after the word regarding the construction of instead of building. Then again, maybe that only implies actual construction?
How about development?
Yes.
Okay. In the types of open space. Oh, that's a font thing. Yeah, he's right. Fix that. Um, typo, typo. Private and institutional open space. Where is it? I just saw it out here. Okay. Regardless of more recent development, the correctional facility still maintains forested open space around Bride Lake and the origin of Bride Brook, thereby protecting the important Alewife Run noted above, as well as providing other protections for wildlife and their habitats. So I think he is suggesting that we add that specific to the correctional facility.
And he provides that reference too, right?
But we even say there that the correctional facility in the guard camp, right, that the use of those properties, to the extent that it's open space classification is questionable. So I think we reckon, we're recognizing it as open space.
Yeah.
I, I get the comment, but.
Right. It is a true fact, but I'm not sure how it applies to what we would write in this section.
Well, does he mean in reference to the Alewife? Is that what his real?
Yes.
Point is, or?
That currently the correctional facility is acting as open space around Bride Lake.
Right, I don't think we're disputing that, and I don't think we don't, we say otherwise, so I think it's fine.
Yeah, I think we're saying we could even expand on these, we're supplementing, yeah. Okay. Another area where.
I see what he's saying. He's suggesting on, regarding the Nyonic River watershed plan, I think what he's saying is we, we recommend that the Nyonic River watershed committee update their plan to further recommend intermunicipal cooperation.
Oh, that makes sense. Yes, yes.
I think that's.
No, I don't think that's what he's saying. I think he's saying that their plan says that we need to collaborate with the other three towns.
Well, they do that through the committee. Committee's made up of members from multiple towns.
Yes, but as a, as a municipality, we should be collaborating with the other three municipalities, is I think what he's saying.
We do, we have a member who sits on that committee.
I am comfortable, as is. I don't even see where that is. Oh, down here. Sorry, guys, I. I mean, we're supporting. I'll leave it to you guys. What do you think? We need to do copy edit on that one?
Well, this, this number eight is specifically referencing purchasing more, more, uh, it's like at open, open space acquisition.
Yeah.
But there, but I think his comment is more of, more of a collaboration between municipalities, which I'm kind of feeling like if we have a committee that, yeah, I mean, I don't know what else we would do.
Yeah, and as ref, as being in the open space chapter, I'm comfortable with this recommendation as it applies specifically to open space.
Number eight.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's a good one.
I don't know that you need to add anything.
All right. Um.
These, I mean, just to, for the sake of time, um, adding an item to encourage LID as much as possible, I think that's throughout this document. I mean, we're in, in an effort to comply with sustainable CT. That's kind of one of the things we try to do. So I'm thinking it, it's in the document, but maybe we weren't specific. Um, but I don't know that we need to add another specific item to encourage LID.
I agree.
Suggest his next one, the references to a particular dress where the police station might be relocated. Well, I think that's been determined for us.
Yep.
We may want to just edit that.
Okay.
And then, then the only other one with the substantive one is not until you hit to page seventy.
Okay.
So we, I want to talk about the police reference on page sixty-two, and then the next one, page seventy. I'm just trying to read ahead.
Thank you. Sixty-two talks about firefighting foams that contain.
PFAS.
PFAS.
You could, you could add that, I you should say add it to the end of the sentence.
You okay with that? At this point in the document, we will have defined them, but I could write them out.
I, I think you can use them as acronyms once we've defined them.
Okay. Okay, so seventy-six is the next one, right?
Yeah, this is. Uh, well, actually seventy, sorry. We wanted a recommendation with respect to connectivity of areas for use by pedestrians and bicyclists by improving or adding sidewalks. But that, in our transportation section, we had a whole.
Yeah, we have, we.
Part of the transportation plan addressed that.
Right.
Yeah.
So I don't know if it's appropriate to add it here.
Uh, this is in residential development?
I think it's in my section too.
Yeah, I don't know that I want to add it here because also we talk about, um, uh, the subdivision regulations, which I think we don't want those in there, the sidewalks in there anymore because of the road width and impervious surface of the CDD, um. Right?
And then the next seventy-six on fertilizers or pesticides.
I may want to stop. Number ten? Okay. This is what he wanted it in?
I don't know that I would say no fertilizer, certainly minimal. Uh, we do have some constraints depending on what the municipal property is. For instance, if it's a school, we're limited because there's schoolchildren. There's, there's laws on that, what fertilizers can be applied. Uh, but the other properties in town that don't abut a school, um, you know, we can allow the use of fertilizers and pesticides, so you know, I think rather than saying no, I think, you know, managed application, uh, that's kind of the key.
Yeah, well, and I think we covered that in agriculture and in parks and rec. And this is commercial development. Um, right? Looking for some direction.
Um, I like the idea of organic landscaping, but, uh, I don't know how practical that is for commercial businesses.
Well, I think we cover that. We, don't we cover that in another spot somewhere?
I, I think we addressed it in, we talked about development and commercial properties and reducing environmental impacts.
Should be.
I don't know that many commercial businesses use a whole lot of fertilizers or pesticides herbicides because there's typically not a whole lot of vegetation around them.
We talk elsewhere about developing a town ordinance on this. Because we talked about it, um, with the, uh, active ingredient in Roundup. Uh, we talked about, uh, a town ordinance on certain pesticides and we referred to an outside list, didn't we?
I don't recall. I'm thinking it, it's probably okay to not address here.
Yeah, I agree. Right. Um, okay, page eighty-three looks like the next one that we might have to discuss.
I think that's a typo.
Um.
Oh.
Megawatts? Okay.
Would we have to say what, what our reference is then, or like where we're getting the information, or can we just add that?
Yeah, where? I am reading his recommendation and I don't see it. Oh, I think I had to go further. I know you guys are scrolling on your own. Help me out here. I do not know where I'm going.
So, the, page eighty-three, um, he talking, he's talking about a, uh, a figure. He's saying figures are given for mega watt. If you search for MWE.
Oh, no, I think it's further down. Wait, go, go back, Michelle, to the energy section.
Yeah, I think the page numbers are.
Pages have gotten a little discombobulated. I think it's that figure right there, right?
I think above, under the history. That's where he started his comment.
Yeah, cause you're, wait, we're talking about the nuclear, yeah.
He suggests re, yeah, eight seventy megawatt MWE for unit two. Um, it is as M.
He's, he's saying that the important thing is the amount of electricity that's given, not the megawatts of thermal. Or am I backwards?
Yeah, I think you're right.
He's, he's calling out the units, I think.
Okay, but we're citing this.
Yeah, that's directly from the U.S. Nuclear Regulatory Commission.
Yeah, no, let's not change that.
Yeah, I, there's three really specific sources here, so I would like to leave it.
Yeah, cause that's like directly from that.
Okay.
So he didn't come up on that, huh?
What?
Well, he, I see what he's, uh, never mind. I think.
I understand what he's saying, but I'd rather have the exact citation.
Yeah.
All right, this is about green skies. Green skies received approval to construct this solar project from the Siting Council, not deep, which is true.
Well.
Right here.
Yes. And do you know if we have cited the Connecticut DEP prior to this? Like background?
Oh, yeah, you're right. Um, I'm not sure. We must have, we must have at some other point.
You must, okay.
Right? Do you think? I don't know.
I think, well, there's Connecticut deep just below that sentence, so.
Yes.
You want me to do it just in case?
Sure. Oh, and then, yeah.
Maybe spell out Connecticut.
Yep. Can we go through the rest of his recommendation there?
Um, he just wanted us to note that, he said the. He just wanted us to note that, he said, the later agency. However, issued a general permit for the discharge of stormwater and de-watering wastewater, wastewater is associated with the construction activities for this project. I think he wants us to note that the impacts from which were inadequate controls of stormwater, basically the failure of the erosion, stormwater control resulted in discharge of. Much sediment. I mean, I can, I can tell you approximately 800 plus or minus cubic tons of material left that site based on a calculation by Don Fortunato.
Wow.
We want to get that into the weeds with it, but.
All right, so what we're saying here is deep issues the stormwater permit and then the Siting Council uses that information to approve the project. And in this case, the stormwater. Discharge, the stormwater permit. Did not adequately protect the site.
Right, right. That's really interesting. That's.
This is a proven fact, or is this like, I mean, because?
No, that makes sense because I mean, yeah, this must just be, yeah, deep issued the permit. Right?
Yeah, I, I mean, the question is, you know, he wants to note. That there were impacts as a result of inadequate erosion controls.
Well, and we did that. And we cited that.
Oh.
So I think we're good.
Okay.
We got to number this figure.
Okay.
17. Okay, there's a recommendation on solar here.
Oh, there should be a space after the figure in the, between figure and 17. Oh, wait a minute, there, yes. Sorry.
Thank you. Don did not catch that one.
Comment on number 85 regarding renewable energy. I mean, they are becoming more cost effective. I mean, whether or not they're being. Approved as a matter of policy, that's opinion.
I agree. I don't think we need to put that in. Yeah, no.
All right, page 88, 89. Enact zoning regulations to limit any proposed wind power development to areas appropriate. For such a usage.
I don't think we should. Do that yet, you know, like I think that being a super, like really over regulating something before it's even like a thing is just not a good idea.
I think that would need to be studied. I mean.
Yeah.
I mean, we could recommend, I mean, obviously, you know, as the plant, the plan is a bunch of recommendations, so. I think you could certainly say, hey, we recommend you explore adopting zoning regulations for the. Regulation of these. Uses. I don't know how that will kind of pan out in the end because anything, if any of these alternative fuel sources generate over five megawatts, so I, as I've been. Told by our council is it constitutes a public utility, at which case it goes to the Siting Council and we lose our jurisdiction.
Right, so I don't.
There's been changes throughout the state with this, and I think some other towns, I can reach out to some of my fellow planners to find out how they're made out, you know, Lebanon was dealing with this, and they had. Their, the company that approached them. On the flip side, not only did they apply to the Siting Council, but they applied to the town of Lebanon as well, so it was a little different that they were willfully doing that. So it may be a good recommendation to adopt them. So I'd be supportive of it. What those regulations look like. On the, you know, that's a totally different question.
So text changes.
So let me get this, I'm sorry, I'm just trying to understand. He's telling us to tell the zoning commission how to zone wind power.
Yeah.
We just recommend they adopt regulations that would. You know.
Would they not, would they not be doing this anyway? I mean.
Well, if they don't have them on the books, then you kind of like the. Solar thing, do you, you open yourself up to someone coming in and proposing one for you, right?
Yeah.
In that case, I would, I would say that it wouldn't hurt to. You know, give them a nudge and say, we might want to start thinking about zoning for this.
I think it's a good idea to put it in there. I mean, we do it with other uses. In that, in that regard, right? We make a recommendation here to go adopt regs over there.
So I'm going to put this at the end because it's going to screw up the recommendations matrix if I don't.
Oh, no. So we could even make it more broad, like. You know, not just wind, but wind and solar, like maybe zoning should. Adapt.
Yeah, I agree with making it more broad, adopt both wind and solar. Or emerging energy sources.
Yeah, emerging.
Sources.
Yeah. Development of new.
Zoning requirements for renewable energy.
Siting.
Sites and. I don't know. Yeah. Siting, yeah.
I actually think that'd be a good idea because I, I've already been called an approach for, you know, charging stations and like, where do we put those? What's the regs on those, right? They're structures.
Yeah, that's a good point.
So I started the conversation with my colleague, Bill, and. Tip toeing through it, so.
Well, do you want, in that case, do you want to include this one to include?
Well, you've got a renewable energy, I think it's.
Yeah.
We have it in the transportation, probably.
Yeah, and we have, um, we have it. I just scrolled past it.
That's okay. I, I think, remember. There we go.
So that intuits that zoning would be necessary, but we can state it.
Maybe at the end, maybe at the end of that one, number six, say something, make a statement that says something like. Encourage zoning, clarify, whatever.
Oh, and that last, in the recommendation you just wrote, just say such or including, but not limited to electric vehicle charging stations.
Okay, yeah. Is that what you envisioned?
Yeah.
Okay.
Capture.
All right, cool. I think the next one of meat is in the municipal solid waste management recommendations where they suggest we address. Burning yard waste. Which. I believe is already a. Especially as written here in the recommendation, I believe it's already a regulated activity.
Yes, it's already at least a town ordinance. You need a permit to do it.
Yes, and so I do not feel we need to add this, but I certainly could be persuaded to add a sentence about supporting. That we support the existing. Permit process.
Sounds reasonable.
I'm not opposed.
Do we need it?
I don't think so.
Well, the only reason, the only reason I would think of that we might want it is because I don't, and maybe I just don't remember, but do we even mention bulky yard waste or yard debris anywhere in our plan?
You know what? No.
That would be the only reason I would think of it, but. I think it's regulated under the fire. And zoning too already. Maybe not referenced in our document, but I agree with everybody that said that. There's already rules for it.
Too simplified?
Nope.
Okay.
Perfect.
Page 118 is a typo. We're almost there. Why the name of 161 near Gorton Pond?
Yeah, I saw that one.
I.
So here's the thing, here's my comments and you guys, like. We propose a lot of things that are not readily feasible or economically whatever.
Yep.
You know, it doesn't mean they're a bad idea and it doesn't mean we should take it off the list. I still think that that's a good thing to do. They're right.
The engineering solution there is to actually acquire the properties at the end of the, at the intersection. It was a.
Oak Hill Drive there.
Oak Hill Drive.
Right, and I don't believe we mentioned like how to do it. We just said, we think that the road should be widened.
Right.
And I don't think we're calling anybody out for whatever. I don't know.
I agree.
That's my thought on that one.
We, we proposed in the transportation section anyway that. The pedestrian connection there around Gorton Pond, whether it be a concrete sidewalk or a candle levered. Or walk.
Right.
Yep.
Why do you think it should be widened?
Have you, have you ever seen a bicyclist going around? Going north on 161.
I see that all the time. Yeah, it's really scary.
Next time you drive by there, just imagine there's somebody right around that rock wall as you're going north on a bike.
You ride a bike on the wrong side of the road.
You can't do that. No, I ride really fast right there. Whenever I go by there, I'm like, oh, go a little faster because they're not going to see you.
That curve is, if you talk with the police, it is a hotspot for accidents. They've had a number of them over the years. They're not regular, but they've had enough at that spot. The big issue is who owns the retaining wall? The house or the state, and they go back and forth.
Yeah, so I think we've had a conversation about this particular recommendation already a lot, and I think too, when this kind of feedback came from the Board of Selectmen, you know, what we told them is that this is a menu of available options of solutions. They're not all going to be economically feasible, but they're all, you know, things we could and should do were, you know, funds and logistics not an issue, so I think we should leave it. Um, this other one, number 122, we addressed that already with the feedback from Mark Salerno. On sidewalks on Boston Post Road. Number 123, suggesting putting areas where EV charging stations would be appropriate.
Think we would need more data.
Well, and I think we already did it. We said to do it right off the bat in town lots, and then we said to encourage it in new commercial developments.
I think we're good then.
Page 82, and the rest are.
Make a request. I'd rather see private enterprise involved in this instead of government. I would prefer to eliminate town hall and schools, any kind of town property having this. Activity. It's just a. Rather have it privatized and. Let the market determine how many and where. You should be.
Then I would say then, if we're going to call out our town. Parking lots, then we should make a reference to lease.
I think we did do that and we included that case study from the Mass DOT.
Okay.
Are we clear about it?
I guess not.
If Norm's questioning, and I just want to make sure we're clear that.
I just don't like the town getting involved in business.
Yep.
But it could become a revenue generator if the town's leasing the space.
That's fine. That's fine, yeah.
Just like we lease the.
Touch it.
Yeah, we lease the docks to the boats, right? Would be the difference. You can lease up. Space to the guy who wants to sell energy.
As long as the town just picks up a monthly check, that's it.
Where am I going here? Uh, 26? And. Organizations, EV charging.
Private.
Providers?
Yeah, providers, that's good.
I like that. It's good.
Looks like we've got to double check the references too. That's come up a couple times. So I'll go back and look through that, but that gets us to the end of this.
Woo!
Document.
We missed, we missed one that said municipal financing.
Yeah, he said the lack of text in this chapter says it all.
Yep, well.
Wah wah.
Yeah.
If only we knew somebody who worked in the municipal finance office.
I know them, but. Guess I don't have enough clue.
Who, who's a good arm twister? We need that person to go and ask them to do, to update this.
Okay.
Well, you know, I, I don't know. I mean, we, this document did go out to all the boards and commissions, including the Board of Finance, correct?
Did they, did the Board of Finance read it? Because I haven't heard anything from any of them.
I don't know. I can't speak for them, but we certainly could reach out to the chair and ask if they have any comment.
That might be good to give them a nudge.
I know Camille was looking at it. Haven't heard anything back from her.
Oh, okay. I mean, it's not like we have, it's not like we haven't reached out to everyone, so.
Yeah.
It's well documented.
The only thing that I would think to add in here was that comment from Roseanne Hardy, which I'm not sure if we added that after our last meeting. Regarding funding the open, okay, so she says we have a fund. We have a line item.
MULUS, C R N E, C N. R E account.
Did we put that in the open space section? I think we did. I think we did that at our last meeting and also added the protect a place recommendation. I think we did that at the same time.
Might, maybe instead of establish, just fund. Fund the account.
Yeah, I think she said something about making it a line item on the budget.
Yes.
Is that what she said?
Yes. I can hop over to the open space chapter if we want, or we can just.
I think it would be just as easy to do it right here again. I mean.
You could say the line item, yeah.
For annual contributions to the CNRE or whatever, and then. For annual contributions to the CNRE or whatever, and then. Somebody really smart who knows what that acronym is.
Yeah, Carrie, do you know what that is?
Can't even find it.
Maybe we put a note on it? Is that something that you'd be able to find out, Gary?
Yeah.
Maybe just add it as a comment and then.
Part of the capital of plan.
CNRE, is that what you said?
E N R E.
Okay.
Sorry.
No, 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 very good. Okay.
That was five pages.
Yeah, it was.
Yeah, man, good job, guys. That was um epic.
Yeah. That might have been, that actually might have been the, the, the best outside input that we've gotten.
I think it is.
From a review point of view, anyway. I mean, I know they all had contributions, but.
I was most thorough, yeah.
They gave us the best contributions too. I mean, he gave us 18 pages in the initial stakeholder feedback.
Was that like a group effort, or was that just a person?
It, Don Danila sits on both the Niantic River Watershed Committee and Save the River, Save the Hills. So he has kind of um. A foot involved and was their point person.
Yeah, that was really good.
Yeah, very thorough.
And I don't even think he's an East Lime resident, which makes me even more grateful of the time spent.
Yeah, for sure.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and stop the screen share.
Thank you for doing that, Michelle.
Thank you for going through it all with me. Um, any other? Feedback to review? That was pretty good.
Yeah, nice job.
I think that's all we had. That's all I received. The part. I did, and I started working on the recommendations matrix, like, I emailed you have a copy. I don't know if you had a chance to. Start filling that out, but I was going to paste, cut and just cut and paste all the recommendations into the recommendations item line. And then all we do is just check the box, which commission, board, or community group would be responsible. Uh, I'm gonna. Share my, do you want me to share my screen?
Sure.
Show anyone what. So, or on the left, you have P O C D chapter section. I'll cut and paste all the recommendations in. Go, I was gonna color code it as best I can, but I started running out of colors because.
That's cool. Nice. Really good. Good work.
And then I'm hoping to, you know, scroll in here, applicable references, so if there was anything additional to. That item, that recommendation, maybe, we, we had started that with the uh. The stakeholders matrix, so I just kind of took from there and went. Um, so we've got every board and commission, I think that's applicable.
Yeah.
Um, if you guys see anything that's missing or someone that's not, let us know, we'll fill it in. And if I can color code it, I will, because I like.
Very cool. Nice job, Gary. Thank you.
Should be easier, you know, we can just put the recommendation but by chapter.
Yeah.
Wanted to.
Awesome.
That would be a really nice thing to keep going to.
Yeah, definitely.
And I, I could see us, I could see us at like our, our meetings, you know, where we start trying to pick apart. Whatever project is in front of us and see where it fits and doesn't. This would be a really neat thing, just as a, like a. A creep note kind of thing.
Very cool. Agreed.
Thank you, Gary.
Hopefully it'll, it'll, you know, we want it to lend itself to implementation, right?
Yeah.
So. Um, and at least for us, it's a barometer to measure the implementation.
Yeah, that was one of the big things that we wanted for this P O C D.
Right.
To be able to have some accountability and track progress, so this is really nice.
Mary, how are we on, speaking on implementation, and I'm, I'm sorry if I'm hijacking and moving this conversation off the recommendations matrix. The planning commission, they've all received the document to review ahead of November 10th? Or they will after tonight?
They will after tonight.
Okay.
I mean, I, I think they've got copies of the draft as it's been reviewed by other boards.
Oh, you're right. They got one before the Board of Selectmen.
So we'd like to take what we've got tonight, make those changes. Now, I know we, we've noted, so I don't know if you want to make some of those changes, or if you want.
Yeah.
Some of those between now and the 10th, and then update this in that table, and then we're done.
Yeah, I'll make the changes we talked about tonight that I added in all the comments. And just the typos, if you can hop onto the open space chart, and then I think we're okay.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll take care of that. I should be able to finish that up by the uh. Probably early next week. Hopefully by Friday, if I can do it.
Okay.
We want to send out notices that as we've updated whatever, because I mean, people are feeding us inputs and we're implementing. Stuff based on their inputs, or do we just want to? I don't know, I'm, I'm just, that's a, a question, really. Do we want to send out updates as, as these updates are made? You know, like, we made a giant. Really, really great batch of updates now. Do we send out something that says. There's a lot of updates in our new P O C D?
Um, well, when, the public hearing is the, the 10th of November, right?
Right.
So maybe if we just post an updated document. Um, before that date, right? Isn't that kind of what we want to do is have the um.
Need 24 hours.
What?
Statutorily, we only need to post it on the town website 24 hours.
I think that might be good, be like, you know, maybe just a, a note, like, we have been seeking, you know, we've had the. Board of Selectmen and like various community uh feedback, and then we have incorporated those changes. In time for the public hearing, so that like, you know, the, the big one is, it's got as much as we can.
So just put that note on the website.
Yeah, I think so. Does that seem reasonable?
Yeah, I just, I would, my, my thought, my thought was, uh, we kind of want people to know. That it's been updated, so we don't hear a lot of repetitive things that we've already fixed. That's the only thought that I had.
That makes sense.
But I don't know, I don't know how much people are actually gonna take the time to reread it or look for those things.
But, but you, you make a good point, Mark, Mark Kirk. Um, and that, that's because I, I, you know, it, it's something that people will eventually question down the line, so if we can respond to it now. It eliminates the doubt and.
Maybe if we had like a little, like, uh. Just like even a multi-line, like, set of notes that said. Implemented feedback based on this, implemented feedback based on the Board of Selectmen, and, you know, they, and then. Show a revision date or something, maybe.
Yes, I was thinking.
Super detailed, but just something that said, okay, we took these inputs and we made a rev. We took these inputs, made a rev. That's, that's all.
Yeah, no different than, uh, you know, like development plans when we see them and they're changed in different iterations, we just note the dates. Same, same thing. So I think in the note that we place on the web, we just indicate, hey, since such and such a draft, there's been updates. I don't necessarily want to go itemize them all. I can just say.
I don't think we can.
I usually say it's changed based on comp, you know, feedback.
I think it's fine to be quite broad about, yeah, like, we have, you know, had several meetings and. Feedback from the community, and it has been updated as of this date.
Right.
I don't think we need to go in like, oh, this group said this or, or anything, or even maybe specify exactly who's. I don't know, I don't think we need to. I think it's fine if we just say.
They can look at the two documents and compare the changes.
Yeah.
Alright, good. So as soon as this one's updated, we'll re-upload to the site with the, that note.
Okay.
Any other items for discussion tonight?
No.
Does anyone want to move to adjourn?
Like, we're at the finish line? Uh, are we gonna meet again subsequent to the 10th? Or is just the planning.
I don't think we have one scheduled, do we?
I don't think so. That was the next one that I had in my calendar was the 10th.
I have the 18th down. We, we schedule them right through December 16th if we needed the time.
Okay, so I feel like we only need the 18th if the planning commission does not adopt our plan on the 10th.
So I guess if that's it, I just want to say thank you all so much for your help and your input. Greatly appreciated. I could not have done it without you, and. That's huge.
Thanks.
Compared to the undertaking I took on 10 years ago, this was nothing. You guys did 90% of the work, so thank you so much. I greatly appreciate it. And I think it's a great document, and I think from what I heard from those who've reviewed it and read it, we were getting nothing but praise, so. I think it's a good step in the right direction.
Yeah, definitely.
Thank you.
Good work, everybody.
I wish we could have, maybe we can organize some kind of. The committee is disbanded and it would be, you know.
You can have virtual beverages.
Yeah, I'm down for that.
BYOB.
BYOB, or we could go up to uh the brew house. They're outside.
Yeah.
You know.
Where they get their own table.
You know, years, years ago, uh, before my time. When my father was on the planning board, he said they used to pay professional. Engineering company that specialized in this kind of stuff. Many thousands. To do this work.
We, uh, I think before this, didn't we start questioning what it would cost, and we were getting estimates of 100,000?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The city of Middletown, I think it was $60,000.
Yep, so who wants to make up the invoices?
Yeah. My billable hours are through the roof on this norm.
Imagine.
They are, though. If you add it up, I think with all the time that everyone spent, you know, it's, it's easily hit that, so. Um, it's quite an undertaking, and I'm just thankful that you all contributed. It's really, for me, anyway, I mean, I, I was here 10 years ago, and I know what I inherited and where the town has come since then. So it's kind of interesting to see where we'll be another 10 years from now. Looking forward to it.
Well, whoever, whoever does it next time is gonna have a lot better, I mean, like, you know, experience as far as like. Not to say it was bad the last time, because it was good, but like every time you pick up the ball and you run downfield, you're that close, you know, you get that much better and everything, and. We started with a good thing, and I feel like we definitely improved it.
And we had such a big group of people working on it too. Like, we had, you know, we had meetings where we'd have like. Eight people, and then like all the stakeholder meetings, we got input from like 30 different groups, you know, so we had a lot to work with.
Yeah.
A lot of help, so that's good.
Considering the budget that we were given.
Yeah.
Uh, I mean, we were able to conduct a, 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 what I think was a fairly. Good study that, that accurately represented the community's interest.
I agree.
Short of money, right? I mean, the best we could with what we had, I, I think we did a phenomenal job. So, alright, thank you. Although, I don't know if I can adjourn, can I adjourn this?
Yes. Throw a gavel.
Good night.
Thank you all so much. Have a good night. Bye.